Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And uh, and it's been really good weather we're having and some nice weather today. It sounds like it's gonna get a little warmer end of the week. Don't put up with that. Yeah, we got about two inches.
Uh, I think we're to happen this year.
Well, we'll take what we can get. Welcome, welcome here today. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Conkiny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Okay, so uh, first, I guess I have a business since there's two, I don't know, utility permits. First ones for Macombia Valley Electric. Basically to plow in fiber uh, in this particular location, they're gonna be plowing down the north middle of the road. The ride service.
Oh, I mean, across the road or? You okay with that? Well, I mean, I know we get some settlement stuff and, you know, but.
As long as they're thirty-six inches deep, but that's what they're supposed to be. Uh, I mean, ideally, I'd rather have them in the backseat, but I know in certain physical location that you can't do that around here, so.
Right, so is there any? I should say it's timeframe of that we say you maintain it, you put gravel on it, we'll put gravel now.
Basically, what the permit says, we'll expect it afterwards, and then if we have issue with it, we we would fix it and then bill basically.
The only reason I say this because previously we did some of that in the in the right away uh, the road. And then, of course, it settled. They put some gravel on it, of course, and then it rains a couple times it settles and and you gotta dip there, then we gotta fix it.
Yeah. Um, you know, what we do to fix it afterwards, you know, we can, we can, you know, recoup those costs, but you know, sometimes that settlement takes a little more time too, but you know, the other thing is if they're trenching through that and they're crossing over across a covert. Uh, they just need to be clogging it up because we don't need to be ripping through the top of the covert. That's the other thing, especially if there's minimum fill.
We don't need to rip through fiber when we're replacing a cover.
So when they'll have to locate it, but it just makes it hard, you know, say there's only a foot of cover over the pipe. So now they they got this thing trench through there typically. There's not a lot of slack in there. So then when we take the pipe out, it just makes it our job harder to replace the pipe, so.
So they don't go under the pipe either, or under the pipe?
They would if they were probably in the ditch. Like it boring, but if they're trenching, they're not gonna, they're not gonna open up a pit in the road and trench or go under the pipe.
Which is on the board.
Is that care? I mean, why wouldn't they bring a bore machine in and bore under the road?
Because they're going longitudinally. They're not crossing the road. They're going along with the road. And evidently in in their circumstances where the ditch is either it's too much rock, basically, they can't, they can't bore that, so they'll end up wanting to trench along the road because our road a lot of times is filled, so they actually have some buried up where if they're in the ditch, they're hitting rock with it, you know, a foot or whatever. So that's, that's why they they tend to want to trench down the road when there's rock in the ditch.
Off of the side of the road and the?
So in this case, they're going just just north of the middle of the road. Is what they're, that's what they're proposing. And again, as long as it's thirty-six inches deep, it shouldn't cause us too much issue. That's, that's the concern part is that if they install it based on what they're supposed to, what?
Do we uh?
It wouldn't matter.
Somebody out there huh? When they do that, they see how deep it is.
Typically, we don't um. If it's something where there's a specific instance where we think there might be an issue, we might send somebody out there, but they're supposed to give us, I think, forty-eight hours notice of construction. I question whether that happens.
How long down the road are they gonna go? Um.
I'm just surprised because they laid all that already. Macombia Valley did two years ago, basically, all the way up down W Cascade and Big Mill and.
It doesn't list the length, but things some area on it doesn't look like it's very far. A few hundred feet maybe. This is a little bit by half, so with the permit. They're going down the north part of the road, so it'd be what I would call the North Lane.
So up to this point, are they knifing it in the ditch or they boring?
They're knifing.
In the ditch?
No, in the road.
I get what they're asking us, but to get the fiber to that point, they are off in the ditch somewhere. Are they boring that or knifing it?
I think they knifed it all in. I mean, they knife mine in and I mean, the next road over, they did it. I thought they had it down on both roads.
So they're connecting to the existing utility to put in this proposed one. That would be just, I'm guessing they're gonna have to dig that. They're not, so they'll connect to it to the where the existing pedestal is, and then they'll they'll start running into, they'll dig it into the road, and then they'll plow along the road until they come back to where they're gonna tie back in.
So basically, if somebody did sign up for it when they initially did it, now they're tying into it and.
That would be my guess.
Yeah.
I understand they can't really bore in the ditch, but if the road is deep enough that if they bore in the road instead of coming through and trenching up the road. You know?
Well, if they're going across it, they probably bore, but if they're going down the length of the road, it'd be pretty tough to bore.
Not if you're underneath the.
Yeah, typically, we would only require that they bore the road. Number one, if it's paved, obviously, and number two, if they're crossing the road. We allow them to trench along the road in Cook County as well, but it's not something we when I say trench, they call it slug plow or plowed in, knifing in, whatever you wanna call it. It's not the not the best, but it's still fine as long as they get the proper depth. If they get the proper depth, it's no different than thirty-six inches, yeah. Well, like you said, we don't, you know, we don't have somebody out there watching them. We just don't have enough people to do that. Maybe Roger, I mean, we could probably maybe, I'm, I was thinking inspection staff, but maybe maybe maintenance guys could be out there. But maybe that would be a little bit shift in.
Have you ever have a case where there's supposed to be thirty-six inches and we dug something up and it wasn't thirty-six inches and we hit it? And who's who's done that?
So the stands I've taken um is that i- if it was like, say, electrical and it was supposed to be thirty-six inches and it was only twelve inches deep and we hit it, then we don't, I don't, we don't pay for it. If it's not installed, basically, that's a state requirement. If it's not installed in the requirements, then it's it's on them.
Just as long as I have to put the road back to the standard of what we have now.
Is that a motion or?
I would make a motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion to second to approve of Coca Valley Electric uh, Richland number Richmond Town Subsection one uh, fiber burial as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So this is another utility request, kind of similar uh, this is a combination of where they're gonna plow and bore, they're gonna bore where there's crossings, it's fiber optic as well. It's three different locations, one hundred and seventy-third Avenue, Thirty-seventh Street and Forty-third Street. Uh, there's extending service huh?
And Twenty-second Street.
And Twenty-second Street, yeah.
Who's BLB?
That's the new.
Oh, Bernard Lock Nation.
So they're gonna be plowed in the ditch and then boring where they cross the roads.
Motion second to approve BLB committed kitchens um, for fiber optic permit as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
They don't work out of there.
You are?
All right.
No.
So next uh, item on the agenda discussed is the three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue access to Smiths Ferry Road. Um, I don't know how familiar you guys are with this, but what? Do I need to wait?
No, I think we have. Whatever you make that a little bigger.
So they're gonna be adding siding. Um, there's potential that crossings uh, the existing crossing farther up could be blocked for an extended period. So they're building this.
You wanna get the existing crossing first? Maybe explain it better with that. So that's three thirty-fourth is the existing access to the Smiths Ferry Homes.
Talking about up above.
Now. So they're putting a sidetrack. As you see the track there, they're putting a sidetrack on the west side of the track right now, and it's all pretty much up to grade. There's no bridge work being done yet, but it's I don't want, what is it, Todd? A mile and a quarter, mile and a half?
Oh, the sidetrack?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's substantially.
So go north there, Bjorn. If you're following this north, then Todd, you can confirm this if you would. So that piece of timber ground right there go a little further maybe is where they purchased which they thought they owned and they did. And now they're looking to go, can you stop us wherever they're gonna tend to put this down or?
So go back to three hundred and thirty-fourth Street. You got sidetrack, you got mic tracks there. All right, so keep all right, wait. North is up, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so from three hundred and thirty-fourth Street, basically from there about oh, I'm gonna guess a few hundred feet north of there, so keep scrolling north. Okay, starting somewhere in there, okay? Uh, they're gonna come off of, well, actually, go all the way up to where that road curves in. That's probably the best.
It's further north than that, yeah. It's right by your, you're right about you or Macombia's.
Keep going, we should curve in.
Yeah, that's where it's going.
Keep going. All right, so yeah, somewhere in there. Uh, they're gonna continue this where the road curves in, they're gonna split off from that, and they're gonna keep going basically uh, along there.
Keep going which direction?
What I would, that's gotta be south. So right where this white, where it comes together, we're three hundred and ninety-fifth, and there's a crossing. So from there, they're gonna come off of uh, uh, basically cross their tracks.
Three ninety-fifth?
That is a substation of theirs right there. That's a control, but that's one of their control stations, yeah.
So they're gonna come off the road there?
I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that far.
Be the easiest thing.
I think it's right across from the last two cabins, right there somewhere. So click on that, that right, oh, over the other way. Yeah, that one. So they bought that, that Jess don't own that anymore. They bought that property right there, which they thought they and they're gonna put a side road, a frontage road, if you will, down in there, and it's fairly steep. And then I would say they're going to go north toward that last cabin and then put a crossing in there. And then they think they're gonna come back. Think we're gonna get a fire truck or emergency personnel in.
So they're gonna come down there, run it along the tracks and then cross somewhere.
Yep.
The road stops here.
Yep, and whatever's there south of that for road is wide enough for what? A pickup?
Let's get a planted profile sheet from the there, the railroad's into the news.
We do not see three forty-eighth on here. Let's go. This is above thirty grams, okay?
It's okay.
So wherever they first purchase that property from Jess, they're almost going the entire length. And if you see on the left side of your page, Don, that is the driveway of that gravel you just seen. So it's their proposed frontage road, I'm gonna call it, is south of that by.
Okay, in the in the far left of that plan view, you see where three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue starts to get very close, converge on the tracks.
Yeah.
Um, that little driveway there. Okay, you should be able to kind of see that on the aerial, yeah. So just.
You say on the on the left? Yeah, yeah, okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so then basically about, uh, where's the stationing on here? About one, two, three, four hundred feet from there is where they're proposing to come make a crossing. All right, and then and then have that come down and then come back and catch up and tie back into three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue as they show on that plan view.
So let me get this taken. They're gonna do, they're gonna do this no matter what, correct? And whether, and what are they asking?
So the reason I put this on the internet was they made a request that once they build this
Who is that?
Uh, value, wait.
Railroad.
CPKC.
Yeah. Canadian Pacific. Well, by city elevation, right, they're coming on this where they wanna put this in. There's about a thirty-seven foot drop.
Oh.
Twenty-five, thirty-foot elevation drop coming up three ninety-fifth. Down, am I reading that right?
Yeah, down to where the road gets flat. It goes basically from six twenty-five down to about call it six oh eight, so it's about seventeen feet.
And I I guess, have you had had any contact with landowners as far as Smiths Ferry uh, landowners? Or I shouldn't say landowners, I should say building owners, structure owners, as far as are they gonna make that road passable for emergency vehicles from that point south?
The plans show that they're gonna build a road that's uh, basically ten-foot wide lanes, two-foot shoulders and uh, with the maximum, if you look at the profile, man, if you look at the profile, there's a negative seven or seven percent grade going down from the tracks. That's, I mean, it's for the rural design age, you can go up to like ten percent max, but that's super speed. I mean, it's not something we would really wanna build that way, but uh, I haven't talked to any property owners, but I guess, let me cut the, let me cut the discussion back to what I really wanna talk about is
Sure.
They're asking us to take the road over. My, my recommendation is we don't. We don't need any extra maintenance or responsibility for maintenance of this road. It's not being created by anything that we've done. They're building extra sided siding, siding, and they wanna have another way for people to access. In my opinion, this should just be their road to maintain it as a private access.
When we first started talking to them, their big goal was to get three thirty-four closed. To me, if they put this in, that's their way of saying close three thirty-four. And the problem I have is that whole north side, this spring was underwater. So if they're gonna dump people, are the only, if they want three thirty-four to close, the only access would be in and out of this road. And if they just put a crossing across the railroad tracks, nobody can get around there because that part of the road is flooded.
I I guess you're right, and but what Todd is saying, that really has no bearing on what we're doing here. He's basically saying that we wanna take responsibility to maintain this road, which they're gonna put in any.
Yeah.
And they're not closing three thirty-four. We had this meeting.
They they can't close it without the board's approval to do that.
Well, they're not going to that. So is this a decision that we are making, or is this something we're gonna study, or you ever recommend it? I don't want that road.
I've already recommended that we don't take it over.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a decision from the board motion that 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 do you basically motion that you deny the request um, CPKC to take ownership of this road once it's completed.
I'll make that motion.
I'm gonna second that motion, but I look at this, this is a lot of expense to put in an accessory road into this little subdivision. For literally, if we don't close three thirty-fourth, no reason whatsoever.
Not true because they'll block three thirty.
Here's, there's, that's what I'm saying. They're gonna, they're doing this because they anticipate to block that crossing with this.
For long periods of time, correct?
No. They claimed, they claimed at our meeting with the people from Washington, whoever was there, they claimed there will be no more than fifteen minutes. If it is, they will break the train. That's the claim.
That sounds great.
That does sound great.
But this is this is like you, like that, there's a lot of expense to not, for for nothing, for not doing, not gonna block anything.
This is their way of saying, well, we put in an extra way so um, we can do what we want.
Minimal expense to them.
Yeah. So.
We 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 propose a south entrance. Again, that's due to the park, isn't it? Whatever, that's here, nor here, nor there. I have a motion and a second on the table to not approve ownership or maintenance of the um, proposed new this road construction as proposed. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
And then I've never really had, so by the way, like in your minutes, I just, I'm gonna send them some kind of verification, so I just need to get section of that minutes and copy it, so.
Don't copy the meeting.
Yeah, the whole transcript or just that?
Proposal letter be drafted.
I'm gonna send a letter to him, but as an attachment, I was gonna put in the per minutes from the
My minutes won't be approved until next week. I wouldn't suggest sending something that's not approved.
I would wait till I get the minutes, yeah.
Then I
Yeah, there's no like, there's no dead.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. So the next point of contention here is the uh, uh, the fence obstruction along two hundred and sixteen street. Uh, there's a little bit of history here. Uh, the fence, I don't remember seeing pick another, but it's it's within like two or three feet of the road.
Yeah.
Um, so we've sent a letter, the engineer's office sent a letter in two thousand and seventeen, we sent another one in December of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and it hasn't been removed. So this is just a final letter uh, basically saying uh, they have thirty days from the date they will receive the letter uh, to move the feet, move the fence thirty-three feet from the center line of the road. If it's not removed by that date, then we will cause the fence to remove. And then we'll attempt to salvage it and put the material, place it right along, right out, like thirty-three feet off the road, off the center line of the road. So what we're, I just wanted to make sure the board was uh, in support of this, on board with this. Uh, you know, obviously, taking people's fence out could be uh, cause uh, so
Correction.
Correction, yes. Uh, so I just wanna make sure you guys are still comfortable with this. We'll probably have
It was more disappointing. It's taken six years to get to this point.
Well, I'm thinking the thirty days is even a long time. You've sent them two letters, if not more.
Well, and I think, but what, one thing I added or had Jayden add to the letter was that we're gonna attempt to tell them where we're gonna put the fence, like, hey, this is for real. We're not sending another letter that it's another letter. This is like, if you don't do it, we're gonna take the fence out, and here's where we're gonna put, where you're gonna put the the salvage stuff. So like, it's going out, and we're not gonna really try and, you know.
Like you're nice to give them the salvage stuff.
Yeah.
So um, I mean, a little bit of history on, I was here when some of this started, and first it was a tiny electrical fence pole with one wire. And a letter was sent, of course, and never followed up on, basically. So and Lisha probably remembers this also, that the letter was sent and he basically just bitted it and at the time, it was never followed up on, which it should have been. Because there's no place right here to actually get rid of any snow that would be on the road, because as you can see, the poles are in the roadway.
Yeah, like this picture shows.
And they're liability.
They're about eighteen inches from the gravel.
But my question, eh, I support it, if you know, I can be disappointed it took this long to get to this point, but uh, um, are we gonna make this kind of a uniform policy throughout? Because I don't think this is the only spot in the county that has similar things. And it shouldn't be kind of spot enforcement. It should be kind of a uniformity.
Right.
You know?
So here, the way I look at it is, if you're right, and we hear uh, like notices from our guys, you know, at the field saying, hey, I got this, I got another fence or whatever, so we will be addressing these. And there's a lot of places where the fence may be within the right of way. But for us, the ones we're gonna focus on is the ones that actually uh, uh, prevent us from doing maintenance. Like, we can't win snow, we can't do a lot of things. We're gonna take care of those, the egregious ones first. The ones where, you know, it's twenty foot off the road or twenty-five foot off the road, and it's supposed to be thirty, I mean, I don't got to worry about that because it doesn't really interfere with the maintenance. But the ones that interfere with what we need to do to move snow off the road, those are gonna be the ones we focus on first. And I'm just gonna take them as we get them from our maintenance guys, like, hey, because I, we already got a couple um, when Jayden went out to look at this, he, I think he, one of the leadmen stopped him, like, hey, I got a couple others in other territories. I'm like, well, get the information, and we'll, we'll look at it and move forward, start the notification process.
So the question is, is it legal for us to go on a case-by-case basis? Basically, we can go on a case-by-case basis if we think it's a hazard.
As we get notified.
Personnel, yeah.
Yeah, so really, I think it's chapter three eighteen talks about anything that's an immediate hazard, we don't have to give notice, we can go out and move it. So this is, this is kind of taking an extra step, allowing the property owner to have their, have their, do their due diligence to get it moved, but if it's like.
Reassessing a beat of this gentleman if we remove this fence?
Uh, at this point, we're not. I mean, that's up to you, but I I
I just tore out a bunch of vents. And you're gonna just set this thirty-three feet back?
They're just gonna pull the posts and plant out now.
You're talking to no day minimum to tear that much fence up.
Well.
What are you, what are you gonna do with the wire?
The wire, what, what, how I would do it, I would just have the guys go along with the skid steer, pop each post out along there. Drag the post into the ditch, you pop out the first three, pull them over to the edge of the ditch, lay them over there, do the next three, lay them over there, and just take the whole finish, one post at a time, and just lay it over at thirty.
Wires attached and everything?
Yeah. There's only one wire or two wires, electric wire.
Yeah, I'm not gonna try and roll it up on an old steel, you know, rim or something like that for them, yeah.
Oh, I'm just saying that's.
We're gonna try and do as minimal amount of effort as possible to get the fence taken out and be salvageable.
You're looking for action to approve you sending the letter.
Approve the board deciding the letter, basically. There's place for you to sign, that's it.
I'll make that motion.
There you go.
Motion second to proceed with the obstruction and right of way of two thousand and sixteenth as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay. Um, um, item that I just wanted to hit real quick, uh, we did have a an incident with a dump truck box and a power line. Um, there were no injuries, but there was damage to RSCs. I think there's two poles, so we haven't received any billing from that yet, but uh, so the minimum overhead crossing height they have to meet is eighteen feet. Unfortunately, when our box are fully up dumping, we're at about twenty-one feet, so um, when we process overhead crossing permits, you know, we wanna make sure that those lines are put in at twenty-four feet or higher, but there's a whole plethora of ones that are lower than that, so anyway, just to keep you aware of that. Um, the PCC patching work is done, that was going north out of Preston up to the river and then D fifty-five for to from Lamont to fifty-two um, total on that was like seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. That, we had budgeted five fifty. That was a couple things. We added about thirty thousand in additional patching, but the the main reason the expense was higher is just because our the unit price for patching was higher than what we had, you know, experienced from last year, even with adding a a, an increase, so, but it's done. Um, the day labor project. Um, the day labor projects. Uh, failure construction plans on starting those, the day labor after Labor Day, uh. So there's six of those bridges to do. They're gonna start on the Outer Creek Bridge on uh. Two hundred and eighth street, I think. Those beams are gonna get, they were starting there, cause those beams come off and then we're gonna use them on another bridge, so. Uh, they got six bridges to do and their intent is to get those done this fall, yeah, so. That's it. Three of the work is going on pretty good.
I have two calls on some retrieval, retrieval issues, but I think everything's been taken care of and. Resolved and uh they appreciate what you're doing and. As far as the road goes, look good.
The one on three oh eight?
Yeah.
His neighbor called him and then he never really went, looked at it. And then after he went and looked at it, he's like, oh yeah, it's not that bad.
There were a couple.
It says that if I know on three hundred eight, we've been receiving some check.
Payment full? Payment.
I'll be.
So I talked to Jayden early this morning, uh. I mentioned this before, but we'll uh, we're gonna do, we need to do a five-year program amendment, obviously, to add that project. And then we'll need to do a budget amendment to add the expenditure under the new construction operation code three sixty-seven, so we can budget. And program that project so we can spend money on it, design it, all that other happy stuff. And then, um. We're gonna do, we're gonna, okay, let me get this right. So mod thirteen thirty-one. Mod with thirteen thirty-one. Uh, is a bridge that we think we can get. Money for like we did mod zero one three eight. We got that two million dollars for. So we're gonna push the, the one we already got the money back to twenty-seven. Uh, and then. Push the other mod bridge to twenty-six and then apply for the same amount of money for that, for that mod. Uh, thirteen thirty-one project. So basically, we're moving them because if we kept them where they're at, we wouldn't be able to. Try to get this other two million dollars for this other moment bridge. So we're just pushing them so we can try and get this additional funding. Um, and then there's two other projects, uh, fox seal jobs I wanna add to the program. Uh, that I should have had, should have had him on there before, but. For asphalt payments that are zero to three or four years old. For preventive maintenance, we've been doing uh gals night, fox seal product, we're due neighbor. So we're gonna start doing that as a preventive maintenance work for asphalt payments that are really paid, so.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other questions for Todd? I know you said that we were a little short on funds for the overlay, right, on two fifteenth, was that? What you said, I, or was that the patching?
Patching, we ran over thirty-third street, um. I mean, yeah, a little bit too. I guess I'm not sure what you mean.
Uh, from the overlay from cotton mill to Lamont.
That's, that's part of market money.
Okay. We're okay with the next years of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Todd? Appreciate it.
Alright.
Thanks. Have a good day. Are there any visitors or citizens here with us today, either online? Through the Zoom or any person that would like to address the board today? Hearing none. Uh, we will, we're joined by Sarah Wright from ASAC. Um, we're gonna give us a report on the S A D B conference, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Come right up front here and introduce yourself, but.
So I'm Sarah Wright with ASAC and I do have, we had a little bit of um technical. Difficulty with our kids, cause they are zooming in from, and I believe they dialed in, um, from Bellevue. I have three of them, Jake. Elise and Taylor, and they're gonna let you guys know about their conference. They went to Fort Worth. Um, and did a mere mid-year conference learned leadership skills. So they can unmute and share. They went um double in July. Yes, they went in July. Um, June.
New York, this is not the Texas trip.
This is the Texas trip. They went to Fort Worth. Yep. I wonder if they're having trouble. They were having trouble. And how many people went altogether? Um, seven kids and three adults.
Sarah, I don't know if you can hear me. I'm on, I was one of the adults that went.
Yep, I can hear you.
Awesome. My name is Chris Oshuski and my son Jake went and I was actually one of the chaperones that went along as well. And I just wanna thank you guys for allowing these kids to go because for me as an adult. What they're teaching them at this conference is what I'm learning in my job right now. In my position with the company that I work with. So to see them already educating these kids with things that I'm learning. It was amazing to see these kids come alive. Um, every night when we were done, we, at lunch and at night at dinner, they talked about everything that they were doing. Everything that they wanna change, what they wanna do at school was just amazing. They, they're well behaved kids. Anyway, but this just was showing me a spark in my son. That just made me proud to see, like, they took ownership of everything they were doing. It was really scary. A lot of them went up and presented and they're in front of a, like, our group alone had a hundred kids in our one group. And they got up and they owned it and they were proud of what they did. We have all the maps. We went to our school board already and talked to our superintendent about what they've learned. These kids are amazing and they really are the future that's going to help shape the community that we live in, which is Bellevue. But without your guys allowing them to go and helping pay for it. Um, they wouldn't have been able to do that. So they made such great friends. Uh, my son made friends with the groups that he was in and he still is talking to them. They're excited for school to start next week to bring sad more to what they are already doing. But it was an amazing trip and we can't thank you guys enough for allowing them to go.
Well, I appreciate that. We thank you for the report and, and the positive outcome, I should say, and uh anyone else?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, so hi, my name's Jake. I was like, also there, I was like, um, a first year. And so we did this activity, like, except in the middle, and it was like, all of it, like, uh, drinking and judge. This is really eye opening to like, you never know, like, with someone going through, like, if you never, by their appearance, you can think what you think, but like. How much you really think. And to also learn about like, our problem statement, like, how to make one, like, how to address it, and what are the causes of it? Jake, Elise.
Um, hi, my name is Elise Verendis and I also went along to Dallas. I was in the same first year sex as Jacob. And like you said, we did like an activity with. Everybody stepped in like the center if you like experienced the thing that they called out. And it was really eye opening because some things you would not be able to like, see on the outside that these people actually went through. And we also learned a lot about the public health motto, so, model. So that was like. Interesting. We had a lot of fun. We learned a lot. Um, and this is Taylor. She was in a different section than us.
Hi, I'm Taylor. Um, this is my second year attending um the mid-year training institute for CACCA. And um, this year we talked about mostly like breaking stigmas and uh. About how you are the only person that can label yourself in your community and you're the only one that can make a change for yourself. Um, and we talked a lot about um, different things that motivate people because not everybody's um. Not everybody's motivation is the same. And so we were learning how to. Um, like associate good behavior with good rewards and stuff like that. Thank you.
I know they're, they're having technical in Bellevue. Um, they are trying very hard to get on and be virtual so you guys could see their faces. Um, Taylor did our advanced track, so she got to go a little bit more and they actually did a vaping um. Presentation as a group to Tom Meyer in Bellevue. And that was something that they learned at CACCA. So it taught them the leadership skills to be able to present. It taught them also that not to judge people. So they learn a lot at these mid-year events. Next year it's in Chicago, so it won't be as far. Um, but it teaches them kind of how to be a good human. And a good person in society.
No, I could, we certainly appreciate that. I uh, I, I um, I guess I was about to ask. Um, I mean, these are all good conferences. Is there, is there conferences closer than Texas that we can go to?
They, it changes every year. So changing it to Florida last, or the year before is where, um, last year. This year's was Dallas, Texas. CACCA changes it. So every year it's in a different place. So next year they know it's gonna be in Chicago. Um, they originally weren't gonna go to this one and they were gonna go to DC to the SAG, which is Students Against Disruptive Decisions Conference, and they canceled it. So um, then they decided that they wanted to go to CACCA again because of what they learned. It is a great learning opportunity and they bring those tools back and they share it with the youth in our communities.
Appreciate it. Any, anything else?
Seven kids go.
Um.
For more areas.
The last year it was, um, the last two years it's been um, Bellevue, sorry, not Macocca. We are starting a youth advocacy group with Macocca High School this year, um, and they would be given the same opportunity to attend. So we do use like our youth advocacy groups as to who we invite. Um, it's not open to everybody because we want them to have that. Um, want to do it. Like have that desire to learn and go there and learn and not be treated like as a vacation, but an educational experience for them.
Anything else for Sarah? I guess the only thing I would say in, uh, going forward, Sarah, is we'd like to know maybe a little beforehand, maybe a list of who might be going or. Uh, who's, who's going and when, when are they going? A lot of times we get to report afterwards, but we know nothing about it, so. The, the, thank, they're thanking us for letting them go, but we never, we didn't know they went, so.
And I can work with Julie and we can, that way you guys would know, cause we usually know a couple of weeks, um, about a month beforehand, so I can work with you, let Julie know that that's something.
That'd be great.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Yeah.
Everybody okay? Brianna?
Yeah.
We're joined by Brianna Kirk, our Jackson County Veterans of Paris. Um, special title is.
Administrator.
Administrator, okay, coordinator, administrator.
Thank you. Some days maybe.
Boss. Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, um, just a brief update. Um, the month of July, we filed a total of nineteen claims. Thirteen of those were new or supplemental. And six were either supporting documentation, requested information from the VA or an intent to file. We only had eight claims that were decided. Um, so there's currently eighty-eight open claims for Jackson County. The most recent numbers we have are from June. Um, in the month of June, there were three hundred and ninety-four Jackson County families that received a total of six hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. In compensation, pension or DIC benefits. This is an increase of nine veterans and sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars since May this year. Um, Bellevue outreach is still happening the first Wednesday of every month from nine to one, and that's at the American Legion. So at our last commission meeting, we talked about um, home base Iowa. And Jathan, um, who works with home base Iowa, came and Kelly Brown from the Jackson County Economic Alliance was there as well. And Don came too. And so we talked about getting a committee together to get Jackson County on board as a home based Iowa community. Um, so next steps for that, um, you guys would have to sign. Um, a resolution in support of Jackson County becoming a home based Iowa. Community and then um, we would just have to get like a list of incentives that the county would offer. Veterans that would either move into the county or work in the county. Um, but we would like to get a committee together to kind of hash out those details. So we would like to have that finalized before we start budget discussions for fiscal year twenty-five.
When you say that, is there an excellent financial responsibility there, think for something like this, or is this um?
That can be solved. Um, we, in the meeting, they were talking about that. There were some of the other counties or surrounding counties, what they do. They offer financial assistance for veterans moving into the, to the community. Um, if they wanna start a job, different things that they offer, maybe. Moving allowance or whatever, um. The committee was thinking of looking at what some of the surrounding communities were doing. Um, I forget the one county, they actually said that. Um, they budgeted like five thousand dollars for maybe a thousand dollar moving assistance or down payment assistance on buying a house. And the return on investment, when you brought a new veteran in the community with their dollars or whatever. They said it was exponential, so it worked really well. So that's what there, there will probably be some kind of budgetary request, but it, you know. It's not huge. They're just trying to figure out how they wanna go, whether it's like entrepreneur help. Um, purchase a home kinda health where, you know, you're getting property taxes, that kind of thing, so that's all gonna be defined. And uh, and we can go from there.
Sounds good. I know we do get emails periodically about the home base thing and yeah.
Uh, resolution of support is kind of a generic. Plug, plug and play resolution. He said he was gonna send a couple of copies. Um, that we could get it, get it in and just do it and uh, go from there. That's just a kind of a blanket pledge of support that needs to happen.
Okay, appreciate it.
Great. Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
Marty?
I'd like to be short and sweet.
Marty, yesterday, Marty Hoodler, Jackson County Mayor. Or departmental update. Good morning.
Morning to you too. Um. I've been working on the handrail out here a little bit. I had to change my plan. From my original one because the corner of the cement is broke out. So I was gonna put a quote, uh, post right in there, but I'm gonna have to put two more posts to move it out away from us. Um, other things, we're getting ready for the, it's gonna be a couple trials in the courtroom and. The air conditioning, the thermostats are. Beyond me, okay? We try to set them. We, we got two of them set. There's three in the, in the room. Two of them we got to work. The third one, we could not get it to hold. The, the, the temp that we wanted, so I called Bernie. Uh, he come up here two or three times, I think. We finally got it, so it's working, cause otherwise it gets hot in the courtroom when all the people come in.
So with three service calls, is the chief or just to replace the thermostat?
Uh, no, because it was, this thermostat is a program, programmable thermostat and what it was, it was. Shutting off on certain days and once you figured it out, then it worked, you know? Um.
So it was in the programming or is something physically wrong with?
It was in the programming. It's, it's a very, to me, it's a complex thermostat. Instead of just set the temperature, you know, you could program it to come on in the morning, off at night or whatever, Monday through Friday or Sunday. And.
Most people do that from their phone now, but um.
Yeah, well, we, we're, we're not there with that type.
Is the, is there, does thermostat come with a book?
Yes, and we read it twice. I read it, Mike read it. Uh, everybody's read it, but we could not get the one to work, but it, it is working as of now.
Okay.
Okay, um. I had to call, I had to call him three times, we didn't hear to work on it. I haven't received a bill yet.
Called him three times or he showed up three times?
I called him three times because I tried to get, set it myself. It would seem like it would work. And then you come back two hours later, usually the next day I'd come back and it would be right back to where it was. I couldn't get it to stay where I sat, set it at. Um. And we did find a desk for the new gentleman. Uh, what's that?
And. We were talking about that earlier. It, this desk we got, is it part of, do you know, is it part of some of the units that are down there or do you feel it's a freestanding?
What it is, is it, it's a freestanding desk that has. The thing on the side. We did not bring that with us. We just brought him a desk and a. Uh, a chair for now.
So it has a thing on the side though?
Yes, it does. And I, if we dig further in, I don't know if you've ever been down there, it's really filed high. Well, this was put underneath there. That's why we didn't catch it the first couple of times we went down there. Um, I think it also has maybe a. Yeah, on the side thing. I do believe. I could be wrong. Um, is it?
Need a desk that big?
Huh?
Does he need a desk that big?
Well, it's all we had, so we just brought the desk as of now. Yeah.
So there was any over in that room that's got supplies and such over in? So there was any over in that room that's got supplies and such over in?
Say that again.
There was not one over in that building that was in the supply room that?
No, there's no desk in the Penrose Annex at all.
Alright.
We did have desks in the north lobby two weeks ago or whatever, three weeks ago. And then I tried to to give away and nobody wanted it, so we threw them away. We should have got them. You know, I didn't know this gentleman was coming, so I, we took them to the hiring guy and donated the money to um this.
Yeah, miss.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, that's about all we would have um other than routine maintenance um. Each and Bob, the ins and outs of the courthouse, he's doing an awesome job. Any questions? Mike?
Don't think so, no, we're good.
Okay, um. Yeah, I was gonna say we went up to their care facility. He sent me a thing of what they'd like to change on the carpet stuff too. I don't, did you get a copy of that?
That been the or the quote that we saw, that was only for like seven hundred bucks, right?
That was for one of the small rooms that was done.
Yeah, that was just a one in little rooms.
Was that just for the supply?
Yes, they tear it out and prep it, I do believe, is my understanding with Jared.
I thought they laid it too. If it was in the little rooms, they would lay it.
That I can do it.
I think they laid it in that community room.
You think uh it pos the imagine the possibility, laid it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That Jess or whoever.
I will double check with that. I was not aware of that.
Jared has somebody that works with him that does that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, he, when they did that community room that we seen. He also laid that.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
We bought the material and they laid it.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thanks, Marty.
Yeah, have a great day.
Listen.
You'd like to discuss the good opening last week.
Sure.
So we can do that since
Sorry.
Since Bruce and Mike are here, I think um if you wanna come up and.
Bruce, you wanna come up or Mike or both? Do you want to vote or? Have a party up here in the front?
Let's see all. So we had, uh as you'll recall, three three bidders, um all had, uh well, two of the three were very similar um in terms of price. Uh one was much higher than the others, um but all three were very reputable contractors with great reputations. Um it was a pretty close call, I thought, between the uh the Anamosas Group, which I can't remember the name of that.
EG ECG.
ECG, yes. ECG had a good proposal. Uh their premium option, which was the option, was attracting just to have a good ROI and a nice powerful inverter um was about three thousand dollars higher than the Blue Sky uh proposal. And Blue Sky proposal also was, you know, premium equipment. Uh we'd worked with Blue Sky before as well, um very comfortable with them. So between the relationship and the experience we've had with them directly in the past and the fact that they were the lowest cost bid we recommend Blue Sky. I think it's a, you know, it's right around the budget. I think there's a few thousand dollars over on it. Um but if we can get that extra ten grand or extra ten percent in the federal government uh we'll be below budget. I think that's probably a fifty fifty shot, so we'd be prepared to probably either come in, what what the original budget, maybe four or five thousand over.
So I did look at the budget. We do have budgeted fifty thousand dollars from the farm account. So we'll have to take that into consideration, but it is budgeted in this year's budget to be taken fifty thousand from the farm account.
Excellent. So that would put us about three thousand or four thousand over budget.
I thought the total was fifty-seven, one eighty-two thirty. Am I looking at a different number down?
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I did, I was hoping there would be like a spreadsheet with the actual bids breakdowns or we were kind of quoting what we thought the the equations were, but.
Did you look at the the email that I gave you this morning, Dan? If you would all look at your packet, I think I forwarded on to you. Um.
There you go.
The thirty percent federal payment, that's a guarantee?
That is a guarantee, yeah. We just have to file the proper paperwork.
Okay.
When the project's concluded.
Okay.
Do we get that back?
Correct. My guess would be we probably the first quarter of next year and you'd have money back.
And you were, they're all apples that those Blue Sky and ECG are all apples to apples?
They are.
I know we've worked with Blue Sky out here with the uh conservation, or wasn't Blue Sky then, it was Eagles Eagles song.
Eagle Point.
Eagle Point.
That was a different operation. Uh we've worked with Blue Sky, we're in the residential side. Mike has a Blue Sky system. I've got a Blue Sky system. Uh silver gray at our our homes or farms, so uh that's how we we've known them. They also were the original consultant that we worked with to get the numbers initially. So they'd been kind of with us throughout the process. You know, to be fair, we had, I think, uh to look at other options as well, but it turned out they were still the best. They're based in Dubu.
Yeah, I mean, I see it to ten percent, you'd be closer to the to the original, but I I still see a a value in long term.
The numbers were around, I think, sixteen seventeen percent as a uh annual ROI on it for twenty-five years, so you're you're saving a couple, thirty almost three hundred thousand dollars on it over the twenty-five year period. So it's it's a nice return. Cash cash payback, I think, was around eight years or seven years.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to go with Blue Sky's solar proposal.
I have a motion effective to approve the little bit of from Blue Sky um solar as presented for the solar system at the new jail facility, although do favors say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign, motion carried. And I suspect that they will be in touch with construction manager for plans and engineer and so on and so forth, that we don't have to go between.
That's exactly right.
You're taking.
Who would who would be the, is it John Hanson? We should be working.
John or Jeremy Bill.
John.
Jeremy's always on site.
Yeah, okay. John is construction manager, Jeremy's on site.
First step, we're gonna get the permitting, and we'll be getting to get working on the permitting right away. They won't be on site to do anywhere probably for we.
We need to do that extra tip, so.
Absolutely. Sooner we can get it in, the better, so we'll we'll work it. We I was sure it'll be done this year, so.
I know Jeremy was kind of eager to talk to whoever was going to get the bid.
Yeah, well, uh I'm talking with their main liaison today, and in fact, I think he might have went down this this Monday uh to take another look at it. There were some other options, maybe to reduce costs in terms of placing it uh the actual rate, so we'll see. He wasn't optimistic.
Oh, he was, okay.
But he did, he had to go look at this.
That's right. No, I mean, it was just. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and we're looking at the options, it's worth it. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, appreciate your work, uh and we expect you to stay with it.
You bet, we'll do it.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Chris. Lori? We are joined by Lori Rowland, our Jackson County zoning administrator for an update.
Morning.
Good morning.
Steering Committee for the Comprehensive handout here for you. Anyway, this is just the names of those that are on the committee. There's one, excuse me, the one in red is has not responded yet. We've talked, sent her some information, so uh but even without her uh we have fifteen. So with her, if she does commit, there would be uh there would be sixteen.
Oh, I know we have talked about this previously, Lori, but we had talked about um the Economic Alliance being involved, and I know we had some communication with with Ben, and I think he'd be a good asset to the committee as far as his educational background in this in this. Yeah.
Okay, he wasn't really one that you guys had had brought up. I mean, I'm more than happy to reach out.
I had him on the list, and I thought that was I I assumed that it was one of them was going to do it, that's what I assumed.
Okay, and you had contact with them previously, then I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, I had talked to Kelly, like to see if one of one of them.
Yeah, and you want to add them? And I try to make sure people realize their voice is gonna be heard, whether they're on that steering committee or not.
Well, everyone's welcome. We really want input from anyone that has a concern.
Right, well, not necessarily a concern, but just their their.
The input of any kind.
And that's what the public input sessions are gonna be for, right? And I don't want people to think that just because they're not on the steering committee, that their voice isn't as strong. So I tried, I've tried to reiterate that way, reiterate that with some other people that felt that their voice didn't count if it wasn't on the steering committee, and I tried to assure them that that was not going to be the case. So anyway, uh we've been trying to do community outreach uh right now Ruth is over at the library, meeting with the community, uh the Coat at a Veteran Hometown Pride with their monthly meeting. And we plan on being at Music in the Park in the green space Thursday night. So we're we're doing what we can to for outreach, to try to get more people involved, faculty involved in either in the workshops and or taking the survey. So been putting out some fires. I know I caught done in the hallway the other day. Um with some potential issues, uh I don't wanna be funny here, arose in the flood plain down in Sebula along an island. We caught it early enough where there was no building started. So we were able to avoid a a violation of our compliance within the National uh Blood Insurance Program. So we headed off a problem, still working on it with the property owners. It was just one of those cases where we were lucky that his permitted expired. But we caught a problem and it's going forward smoothly. So uh that's outside of Sebula. Uh the first batch of court notices, we're planning on getting those out this week, and that'll be addressed to group one.
And approximately how many?
I'm assuming about ten. And there is one thing, matter of fact, I'm thinking about it. Need to talk to John and John about uh there's probably about four, five that we could not get served. Either no good addresses. No one has, Leesha Lake doesn't have a better address than we do. Uh they don't live here, the address is no good where they were. Uh so I need to talk to John about just posting.
So for even for tax purposes and such, we don't have information?
To the best of my knowledge. The best information we should have should be part of our public records, but I can follow up with Beth to see, well, there's properties, I'm assuming, that are having tech sales.
No, we do every year, and it's, well, I assume that we have contact.
We'll check.
Information for some, I obviously, obviously, if we have not had contact with them, we can't pursue the uh violation.
Actually, we might. That's why I wanna talk to John, because I think there's something that if you post after so long, there's another court process you'd have to follow, but I just wanna follow up and see what that it's gonna be additional hoops for us, but I just wanna follow up and see what that's gonna look like.
I I I mean, just in the back of my mind, we've have given extensions, obviously, and my point is, if we have not even touched base with the owner, I hate to pursue a court proceeding.
Oh.
And without finally touching base first.
Yeah, well, no, we go through the posting, the original notice.
Right.
Giving them time and then following through with what uh abandoned property, what how that would have to go through. So, yeah, it wouldn't just be start court proceedings because we can't get a notice or we'd have to, there's something in front of that that has to happen, I'm pretty confident. And I'm done. Anything else?
Are you sure?
Well, actually, there's something else on my list, but I'm like, you know, we're not even gonna talk about that because.
A lot of these ten that we're going forward with from the first notice.
I'm guessing it's ten.
Well, rock, okay. We're not holding you as a stone on that. But so they've done nothing.
Uh some have, some have made progress, but they're not where they need to be, and they haven't been um unless you want me to hold off on the ones that are still piddling at it uh for right now, but we have some that haven't done anything and others that I'm hearing that the county's stupid and they don't have to go any further.
So, I mean, obviously, if they haven't done anything, we wanna pursue it a little bit. I mean, I understand some of them may move stuff from one place to the other. Um make it look like they're first progressing, but progressing, but um yeah, uh um again.
So do you want us to focus on those that haven't done anything first and give the other ones another week or two before we spend the money on that?
So they have not, have they gotten a second letter? If they've made some progress and not finished, have they received a second letter that says, we appreciate your, you know, your attempt? And we expect to be completed, or we will proceed?
Uh we sent a second letter out the first of July stating that they were not in compliance. It was a courtesy letter, it was not served, it went through US Mail. Right. Even though we're not required to send that out according to our ordinance. So we did do a courtesy leather letter, whether they received it or not, because, you know, if you sent out ten, oh, I didn't get it. So we've all dealt with that, uh but we we did send out a courtesy letter to those that we would send this to. And there would be some that we would probably hold uh that ask for an extension that would not be in this first group.
Yeah, I I guess I would focus on.
I would focus on, my thinking would be focus on the ones who have done absolutely nothing if that happened.
Or ones that haven't gotten an extension at all. There are some that definitely need to be addressed that had made this much progress, but have not asked for any extensions, so they're still back to that original notice, and there's a couple of them that really need to be got done in this first group.
Yeah. I would focus on them.
Yeah, okay.
If they're not, if they've not made attempt to talk to us or ask for extension
Okay.
and have not done anything yet, then we need to.
Well, they have done something, though. But they have not.
I I hear that some have done something. I hear that some have done nothing.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That can do.
That did nothing.
Okay, can you talk to me afterwards?
And.
And I got, I need to show you guys, I need to show you something, Mike.
If you feel, I mean, in your I mean, obviously, you've been on site. If you feel that it needs to move a little faster, I mean, I guess we're gonna leave that somewhat up to you to say, I'm gonna proceed with this, my my job.
Okay, so I'm doing something as far as you went and picked up a gas can that was sitting in the middle of your yard, and that's all you've done.
You made things neat and haven't moved the stuff.
I I honestly think you have the authority to proceed with what you think is best for your department or what your job is, yeah.
Thank you, okay.
We trust your judgment.
Thank you.
I mean, if if it comes to to court proceedings, then I guess we wanna know, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
I just, I just hope that when they get served notice of a violation, it just says you're in violation. There needs to be a list of things that are, you know, and I know it's impossible to list everything.
Right.
But there needs to be kind of like the major stuff needs to be listed and not just, this is not good enough.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause that's very vague, you know? There's different definitions of what junk is and what junk isn't, and what's art and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, there's some that we've considered art and the balls of barbed wire, those are art. So there's certain things we just have to use good judgment on, but I can assure you that.
Honestly, they sell them at art festivals.
But but Dan, I assure you that no, no notices have gone out without stating the major ones. And then also with the caveat of, but um but not limited to.
Okay, that's good, defining what issue is, yeah.
Right.
All right, and I understand you have a zoning meeting on seven PM Monday evening, is that's regarding the comprehensive plan?
That is the commission, yes, and that'll be comprehensive plan.
And we're expected to be there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um we.
We can zoom though, correct?
Oh, absolutely. It's up into the public, uh but at the same time, that the commission is required by code to be part of this comprehensive plan. So uh.
Oh, so that's your commission.
Yeah, the zoning commission, not the steering. Yeah, the zoning commission, not the steering committee.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, I did talk to Laura, and we will have our first meeting sometime in. May, or super May, in September. For the steering committee, uh. She was asking for a list, good emails, to kind of get a consensus on what times seem to be better for the group. Evenings, mornings, you know, during business hours, after business hours, that type of stuff.
And you got my information on the contacts that I sent?
Oh, absolutely.
Emails and numbers and.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's this. I just wanted you to have a list. I didn't think.
And, by the way, I really appreciate the spreadsheet.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Bruce is good at that, you guys.
Well, that was much easier to read than a stack of fifteen here that this one got it a month ago and this one did not. So that's. I like it, I like the color code. I like to check, mark the boxes off and, yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
Good, I'll look it up. Yeah.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Lisa? Our Jackson County order.
Well, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty three board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. I'm moved.
Sergeant.
Motion second to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty three board proceedings as written, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of six hundred and seventy nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and ninety four cents. Okay.
Motion second to approve the claims, um, as presented with a side note, there was revolving, revolving loan funded there for two hundred and fifty thousand, so. That was a good thing. Add six percent interest if I might add. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carry.
Motion needed to accept, place, unfile the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July twelfth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Sergeant.
Motion second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July twelfth of twenty twenty three meeting as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Uh, aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Motion needed to rescind resolution number nine seventy nine dash zero six dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty three. And to approve resolution number nine eighty five dash zero eight dash fifteen dash twenty twenty three. Authorizing Iris to issue a sewer revenue bond anticipation project note. In the maximum amount of eight hundred and seventeen thousand in order to finance the Dressler subdivision water main extension twenty twenty three project. So we've already passed, as I said, we passed back in, in June. The first resolution, which I think was like for six hundred and fifteen thousand. And they're a little short on funding. Um, so now they're asking us to rescind the original and to approve this last resolution for an amount up to eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And that, uh, was an email from Mark Jocelyn.
And this, they pay back with their fees and stuff.
And I understand they went to, uh, USDA.
Yes.
And get some more funding.
Yes.
If I read things correctly.
Yes.
Well, they're, they're covered, I think, Dan, and what your question is, yeah, they're covered for that, and we'll go along into the project cost, uh, and be passed on to.
Originally, when we talked about this back in June, I did seek outside counsel to make sure that you were okay as the board to sign this. I did not do it for this time. I thought it was okay the first time. It should be okay the second time, and I didn't want to incur those attorney fees.
I'll make that motion to approve. The new resolution and rescind the note.
Sergeant.
A motion and a second to rescind resolution seven nine seven dash zero six dash two seven. Dash twenty twenty three and approve resolution nine eighty five dash zero eight. Dash fifteen dash twenty twenty three as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And that's all that I have for the vote today.
Thank you very much. Luann? Are you available?
I am.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, calendar for this week. We do have a couple of work session scheduled. Um, one is a work session on the law enforcement center project. Um, scheduled eleven, the other is eleven thirty, a work session on the use of county property. At two o'clock today is a Mississippi Valley workforce CEO meeting by Zoom for Dan. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, August sixteenth at five P M. P M. Is an E C A council meeting interviewed by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, August seventeenth at nine A M. It's a housing trust fund meeting, um, in Dubuque. I think that they're holding it just by Zoom if I remember correctly, right in. And at six o'clock that night is Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting, uh, Zoom only for Dan. And I will be out on Thursday at least part of that day. Friday, August nineteenth at noon is a D C A meeting. Um, they're holding that downstairs here in the community room. Uh, and that will be for Mike. Monday, August twenty first at one P M. Is a waste authority meeting for Mike, and I think they're holding that one at the transfer station.
Hmm.
Also at one o'clock is Mississippi Valley workforce full board meeting in Davenport for Dan. At three P M. Is the regional governing board. Meeting for Eastern Iowa M H D S in Davenport. Jack will be attending that, and then is the alternate. Seven P M. Monday night is together rebuild. And then goes to those meetings. And as Mike just talked about, also at seven o'clock is the zoning commission meeting. Um, in the community room or by Zoom for any of you that want to go to that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, August twenty second at nine A M. And that evening at five P M. Is a conservation board meeting at Spruce Creek. And then goes to those. And at five thirty P M. It's an Isaacs executive committee meeting in Des Moines. For Mike. And if you did not get the change to your hotel reservation, let me know. I think that's all I have for you today.
Okay, any questions for Luann? That was at five thirty. Okay, that was just somewhere I thought I read four. But five thirty sounds a lot better.
I will take check, take the email. I will look at the email when I go back to my desk.
I get there at five thirty and it started at four, then.
Then you missed it. You get social hour.
All right, I appreciate it. Okay, so we're down to boards and commission reports. Anything in particular that anyone would like to report? I know we had a meeting against interjection and, uh, worked that through last week, and I think we went over some things and some positive, uh. Outcomes there and looking for a little few improvements up there, but. Everybody got a taste for what's up there a little bit, and we all agree that maybe there needs to be a little. Improvement. It's just whole some items and. Um. I'd like to pursue with Marty at some point, maybe if we want to put a small garage door in that room, now we could use that. It's hard to use now because you've got to walk either through either side of the building all the way to the front. Even a lock door would be nice. Oh, if it was thirty six inches wider, but anyway. Any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.